Good afternoon, everybody. We will convene a special meeting of the Cedric County Board of Health with its Cedric County Commission convening today at four o'clock on today, what is today, March 23rd. So with that, it's been quite a day, quite a weekend for all of us. Thank you, commissioners, for all being here. Thank you, staff, and thank you, media, for covering. With that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner. Present. Next item, please.
New business, item A, COVID-19 discussion.
Okay. Tom Stoltz.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioner.
Good to see you again.
Board of Health today. Thank you for our unique seating arrangement again, so we can try to maintain the best spacing we can because of the situation we're in. I'm here to talk to you today about COVID-19 and some updates, and we'll have some options for you to look at as a Board of Health on a way to move forward. Again, just remind everyone, the reason we are taking action is for the purpose of prevention, using the utmost of caution to protect our community against COVID-19 outbreak. We are trying to, what has been termed, flatten the curve, to limit the speed and race at which the infection affects population, and all actions that you as a Board of Health take or will take should further that.
Okay.
I was talking with some of you this morning and some staff through the day. I feel like we're in a three-chapter book. I know what Chapter One and Chapter Three are. Chapter One is what we call hunker down and try to experience what this first wave of this infection looks like. Chapter Three is vaccine and recovery. From all indications, everyone we're talking to, everything we're hearing around the country, Chapter Three is a year to 18 months away. And in the middle of that is Chapter Two, which is careful removal of barriers and careful businesses operate, business as normal, careful. And I liken the time of that to a serious flu season. We know that the virus will still be active, but we hope that the rate of infection and the rate of sickness is one we can manage in our health system. That's what Chapter Two will look like, and it will last several months. After our meeting yesterday, our special meeting, we had, as the chairman said, there was a flurry of activity today, lots of discussion, lots of talking with people, lots of talking with partners. But at 11:00 AM, myself and the chairman and the vice and some staff had a phone conversation with the most important people in the world today to us, our hospitals. Ascension Via Christi, Wesley CEOs and their lead doctors, conference called with us, and we had a lengthy discussion. A lot of it was their logistics and what they're doing, and I'm sure that those Boards and those CEOs will be glad to talk about that in depth. They are quite busy preparing for what could be a rise in this infection rate. But there was four things that I wanted to mention that I thought were significant for you to know. First of all, they talked about their challenge, dislike our challenge, of getting personal protection equipment for their doctors and nurses and their staff. That is a national phenomenon, and I find it concerning, but they are also working diligently to make sure that they have proper equipment. They also mentioned that they are concerned, as physicians and as the hospital, that we are placing too much emphasis on the number of positive tests. As we mentioned yesterday, we do not have enough testing materials to do random testing throughout the community, and so what is being tested is what's showing up at the hospital already sick. And just coincidentally with that, we've had our third positive test confirmed today in Cedric County. So they are concerned that the virus could be more widespread in the community than we know because of lack of testing. Thirdly, they have put out a plea, and they were crystal clear in the phone call to us today, to place some kind of stay-at-home order or something into place which further restricts people from gathering socially. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a bit. And then they also said the same thing that we're all experiencing too, as employers and as particularly employers of emergency responders. They're having difficulty with childcare for their workers, and they're hoping that us, the state, and we can work together as a team and come up with a reasonable childcare plan, challenge, and package for doctors and nurses and staff that have to, that have to go to work during this time. So after the meeting with the doctor or after the phone call with the stakeholders, and I'll mention on this also that the city Wichita manager, Layton, and Mayor Whipple were part of this phone conversation. After that meeting, I had staff sit down, and we crafted what are now three options for you to consider as we move forward. And I'll go through them, and one of the options is a stay-at-home option. I'm going to have Justin Wagner get up and talk and read through some of the potential resolution. Governor Kelly issued an order at 1:30 today which issued, which limited public gatherings to no more than 10. The way we sat today, the way we currently set, is we had a limit of 50. So status quo today, moving forward, could be to let that order stand on its own merit, take our number from 50 down to 10, we'll have to, it's a state order, and stand firm and wait to see how the infection progresses and what it means to our numbers. That's an option for you to consider. Option two would be to take that a little bit further and close down interior dining areas for restaurants and have them go to exclusive drive-through curb service type of delivery only, and also take the route of Johnson County and Wyandotte did a few days ago and shut down bars and nightclubs to the public. That would be option two. And then the third option is to consider having the local health officers issue a stay-at-home order, generally requiring people to stay in their residences and limiting public gatherings of greater than 10 people for 30 days effective March 25 of 2020. This is the stay-at-home option. There are many exceptions in this stay-at-home order because we all understand that people have to continue to live, they have to continue to take care of themselves and feed themselves and conduct some order of life. So I'll highlight exceptions very quickly, and I'm going to have Justin come to the podium and get into some detail, but some general exceptions. Work relating to public health and public safety will continue, of course. Our ambulances will continue to roll, fire will continue to roll, police will continue to respond. Businesses offering essential products and services will continue to operate, and Justin will give you some pretty good description of what that means. Activities or tasks related to health and safety will be allowed, such as doctor's business, clearly. Individuals will be allowed to do what they do today, go obtain food and necessary supplies from retail. Individuals will be allowed to care for and transport family members. Individuals will be allowed to engage in outdoor activities as long as social distancing requirements are met. So these are some of the exceptions. I'm going to have Justin come and talk with you now about some of the particulars of the order, and then we will be ready for questions and discussion. Justin?
Thank you, Tom. Justin, I know you've been doing a lot of work on this, so we are ready to listen.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Good afternoon, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. Consistent with the chairman's request yesterday during the special, the meeting that we had, our office has prepared the draft order that's in front of you today. It's patterned off of Johnson County's order that was approved yesterday. Just to clarify some background, state law vests local health officers for each of the counties with authority to enact an order like the one that's in front of you today. That's why Johnson County's was signed by their local health officer. That's why this draft provision is drafted for our local health officer here in Cedric County. The order that Johnson County approved, the draft order that's in front of you, it gives general direction for individuals to stay at home except for certain essential activities, and it also requests that businesses cease operation unless they are in essential business. And essential business, that's what I'm going to spend most of my time up here at the microphone talking to you about, is there are a number of exceptions for that that are meant to allow for essential activities to occur, whether it's healthcare, whether it's, you know, Tom had mentioned childcare, you know, those healthcare providers will need childcare for their kids. And so there's a number of different provisions that are in place on that. I guess I'm going to start going through this order, Commissioners, I think, starting really on page, page two, page three. And this is going to take a little while to go through this, but I think, I think it's an important issue, and I know all of you think it's an important issue as well. So really, at the bottom of page two is where, you know, I just went through, you know, if you don't have an essential activity, then you should be staying at home. It doesn't mean you can't go out away from your home at all. In fact, it allows for essential activities, which would include activities that are essential for health, safety of the family members or the individual themselves, to obtain necessary services or supplies for themselves and their family or household members, or to deliver those services or supplies to other, other people. And this could include a trip to the grocery store, like Tom mentioned, if you need to buy gas for your car. It's not preventing, this order, if it became effective, would not prevent those types of trips. Also, it'll allow people to engage in outdoor activity, provided the individuals comply with social distancing requirements, and those are specified in more detail within the order. Also, you know, an example would be going on a walk, going on a jog. It does specify, clarify that if you use, you know, playground equipment use is discouraged because there is the concern about people gathering in close proximity or children gathering in close proximity passing along any virus or germs to one another. Also, to perform work providing essential public's, I'm sorry, essential products and services to an essential business, or to otherwise carry out activities specifically permitted within this order. You can care for a family member or pet in another household or transport them. So a good example, an attorney had reached out to our office and asked, what about, you know, shared custody arrangements with children? How would that work? Well, you could, you know, you can follow the court order, which is the very next item on there, to comply with court or administrative orders, but also you'd be able to transport your kid from one parent to another in that situation. This would not in any way prohibit that. Also, it'll allow people to work for, obtain services at healthcare operations. Obviously, that's an integral exception that we would have. Also, to provide services or perform work necessary for, to the operations and maintenance of essential infrastructure. That would include, but not limited to, public works construction, construction of housing, airport operations, aerospace, national defense, water, sewer, gas, electrical services, oil refining, roads and highways, public transportation, solid waste collection and removal, internet and telecommunications system services, we all need to be able to stream Netflix now, right? Including the provision of essential, global, national, and local infrastructure for computing services and business infrastructure. Again, that's, the more important thing there may be, so folks can work from home without and have the infrastructure to do that. Also, the order goes on further to say that part of the essential government functions are defined in terms of, of course, like Tom was mentioning, first responders, emergency management personnel, emergency dispatchers, court personnel, law enforcement personnel, and then also personnel from the United States Armed Forces. You know, so whether it's McConnell or folks along those lines would be able to perform their essential functions. And I think the next thing I wanted to cover would be the essential businesses. We talked some yesterday about how Johnson County had 25 different exceptions of essential businesses where, because again, this is a general prohibition that says unless your business fits into one of these essential businesses, you shouldn't, your business should no longer keep operating at its normal facility. Now, there is, it does say that you can work from home, that's specifically stated within this order, but it would say that your business would be closed, otherwise your normal business location, again, unless you're in essential business. So we'll go through those 26 as quickly as I can. The first one is a catch-all that clarifies all those other things I just mentioned, healthcare operations, essential infrastructure, and essential government functions. Those are all essential businesses. The second one on there is grocery stores. You can read in more detail, but essentially a grocery store, farmer's market, produce stands, convenience stores, places that sell food, essentially, is what you're looking at there. It also does allow places that sell any household consumer products, such as cleaning and personal care products, as those are also important things for public health, safety, and welfare. And so I think that gives a pretty good idea of what that exception covers. The third one is food.
Justin, just real quick. I know that you're kind of running through this quickly, but on this one, it's important because we've all heard from others, you didn't, you didn't mention pet supplies, but pet supply is in this group as well.
Yes, and I'm glad you pointed that out, Chairman. Another thing is that I talked about family members, and pets are part of our families, right? And this order does allow for pets to be transported, pets to get veterinary care, and for you to be able to pick up pet supplies if you need to, you know, food for your dog or cat or whatever it may be. So that's an important exception to point out.
And, and you say, and any other household consumer products?
Yes.
So if somebody wants to go buy something as a household, they can go buy it.
Yes, and it, I'll move on to the third essential business category would be food cultivation, including farming, livestock, and fishing. The fourth is human and animal food processing facility workers. Fifth would be businesses that provide food, shelter, and social services and other necessities of life for economically disadvantaged people. And I think that's obviously an important one, especially, I think those folks who need those services may be more vulnerable than the average citizen for something like the spread of COVID-19, but they do still need those services. Item six would be newspapers, television, radio, and other media services. Item seven would include gas stations, automobile supply, repair, servants, servicing, emergency road services and related facilities. Again, that's part of keeping the infrastructure in place, but also allowing those essential functions to be carried out so people can get to and from their place of employment or their doctor's appointments. Banks and related financial institutions. Hardware, that's item eight. Item nine is hardware stores. Somewhat related to that is item number 10, which would be plumbers, electricians, exterminators, construction, cleaning, and janitorial staff, security staff, HVAC, painting, moving and relocation services, lawn care and landscaping, and other trades and services providers who provide services necessary to maintain the safety, sanitation, and essential operation of residences. And also, if you provide those services to essential activities and essential businesses. Item 11 is businesses providing mailing and shipping services, including post office boxes. Item 12 would be educational institutions. I won't read the whole paragraph there, but essentially, it includes language that would allow them to provide for distance learning services that, you know, various school districts are certainly in the process of doing, or colleges and universities as well. I think it would really apply to any institution of higher learning, I think is how that exception would apply. It does still indicate that folks should provide social distancing of six feet per person. Item 13 is laundromats, dry cleaners, and laundry service providers. I think some of the reason for the exception on that may be that you can have curbside services, there's usually limited personal interaction, there probably is a public health, safety, and welfare aspect to that as well. Item 14 would be restaurants and other facilities that provide or serve food, but only for drive-through, delivery, or carryout, not for the consumption of food and beverages on the premises. And so, and it further clarifies, let's say, schools providing lunches to kids, they would not provide an area for the kids to congregate and eat their lunch because that would provide additional opportunities for the virus, any COVID-19 virus to spread. And so they, you know, they hand it out, and then the kid would need to have, have to go somewhere else to eat it, but not having kids just all in one place eating food together. And so that's a clarification on that. Also, item 15 would be businesses that supply products needed for people to work from home. Item 16 would be businesses that supply essential businesses with the support or supplies necessary to operate. Item 17 would be businesses that ship or deliver groceries, food, beverages, goods, or services directly to residences. Item 18 is really a transportation exception, taxis, aircraft, commercial transportations and logistics providers. It would also, you know, those types of things would be allowed in this, so the people can get to and from, again. Item 19 would be home-based care for seniors, adults, or children. Of course, that's a, that's very necessary. Item 20 would be residential facilities and shelters for seniors, adults, and children because, of course, those would need to stay, remain open. Item 21 would be professional services, such as you have lawyers, accountants, realtors, the real estate services, and insurance services. Those are items that are listed under that.
Justin.
Yes.
Go ahead. Is this where we were talking that clergy would be?
Sure, I'll jump ahead to that, Commissioner O'Donnell. Wouldn't be under 22, it'd be item 26.
Okay.
Which is the only item that, I mentioned 25 exceptions in Johnson County. That question had come up, and the thought was, you know, a good example would be if a church is streaming services on a Sunday, they may want to be able to have people come in and do that. And so item 26 includes leaders and employees of religious institutions.
In our conversation earlier, sorry, Mr. Chair, in our conversation earlier, you had thought, or at least Mr. Papoun had thought, that would have been exempted under that, but we've all received emails from people, in fact, former Commissioner Dave Underwood called, I know at least a couple of us today about that, as well as a number of pastors. So in Johnson County, people are assuming it's under that, professional services?
Okay.
Because 26 isn't there, is that what you understand?
That would make sense. That's probably the closest place you could put it. I think in our draft, we've got that specifically spelled out, but yeah, I think that's probably the best interpretation you could make of the Johnson County order.
Thank you.
Item 22.
Justin, please. Item 21 is important because we've all had questions about professional services, so legal services, law offices, accounting services, real estate service, and insurance service is included in that.
Yeah, and I would also add on real estate, I haven't heard the question come up, but I think real estate services would also include like a closing agent, like if you're going to a title company to close on a purchase or sale of a house. I don't, I think they would fit into real estate services as well, not just realtors. Item 22 is childcare facilities, and I'll go into a little more detail here. Again, this is indicated that's to enable employees exempted from this order to work. So, you know, the intent there, I think, is to say that, yeah, they'll provide services to people who need these services because they're providing some essential activity or business under this draft order. But the childcare would need to be carried out in stable groups of 10 or fewer children. The thought there, I mean, that'd be in line with, later in this order, it talks about prohibiting public gatherings greater than 10. Of course, earlier today, the governor announced an executive order on no public gatherings greater than 10, so this would be consistent with that. And I, I'm no medical doctor, but I, from what I understand of COVID-19, kids are usually not impacted by it, but they, there is a belief amongst the medical community that they can transmit it from one to another and to other people. And so I think part of the aim there would be to, again, both comply with the governor's executive order, but also to try to reduce the interactions or opportunities for COVID-19 to spread if that would be adopted. Also, you know, it talks about the children not changing from one group to another, and that the same childcare provider, probably to the extent possible, I think, would remain with the same group of kids. And that would obviously be burdensome for those providers, but the thought would be, again, as Tom mentioned, these kids are going to need to be watched while their parents are performing these essential services, but let's try to limit any potential spread amongst them of COVID-19 to extent, and also to comply with the governor's order. Exception 23 would be mortuary, cremation, and burial services. Item 24 would be hotels and motels, to the extent they're used for lodging and delivery or carryout food services. They couldn't host a convention, for example, or, you know, have a public gathering where you'd have lots of food served onsite with the number of people eating it. It would be for those limited reasons and to limit those interaction possibilities. Item 25 would be manufacturing companies, I'll just read this whole one, it's a pretty long one, but manufacturing companies, distributors, and supply chain companies producing and supplying essential products and services in and for residences and industries such as pharmaceutical, technology, biotechnology, healthcare, chemicals, and sanitation, waste pickup and disposal, agriculture, food and beverage, transportation, aerospace, energy, steel and steel products, petroleum, lubricants and fuel, mining, construction, national defense, communications, as well as products and services used by essential businesses. And then the last, the 26th exception would be leaders and employees of religious institutions. I did want to take a very quick moment to say something that this order does not require. I think there'd been some discussion, Tom had mentioned, that I think Wesley had mentioned about their employees carrying essentially credentials of sorts in their vehicles to say, hey, I'm on essential business on behalf of you, or on behalf of Wesley Hospital. This order does not require anything like that. It does not require you to have written permission, you know, or a hall pass, if you will, to go from point A to point B. So I wanted to clarify, that's not something this requires. Also, moving on in a little bit more, a little less detail perhaps than I went through those, the order proposes proactive measures that essential businesses would need to comply with to make sure that social distancing requirements would be met. And those are located on the top page seven of the order draft. As I noted before this draft, and it's somewhat outdated now that the governor's order came in earlier today, but it would match the governor's prohibition on public gatherings in excess of 10 people. It also clarifies what a gathering does not include. I haven't seen a copy of that executive order yet. I know that has to go through kind of a process to be signed and finalized, but I imagine that this would be construed, however we would construe it, be consistent with how the governor's order is drafted on that. I'd also, another thing I'd clarify, this is not, this is not a quarantine or isolation order. I understand a lawyer had reached out to several of you and had raised concerns about if this would be an isolation or quarantine. This is not an isolation or quarantine order draft. This is a, this falls under the local health officers' legal authority to take all known measures to prevent the spread of infectious, contagious, or communicable diseases, which is a different statute than what's used for isolation and quarantine. As, as Tom noted during, when he was speaking, this draft would have the provision of its terms, if it was approved by Dr. Menz, effective this Wednesday, March 25th, at 12:01 AM, it'd be in place for 30 days. The purpose of this discussion, as I understand it, would be to provide any input or recommendations if you see fit to the local health officer, and any such recommendation could be made by a simple majority vote. I'd certainly be happy to stand for any questions, and I welcome them.
Okay. Yeah, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. So what, can you just kind of reiterate? Because I think there are a lot of questions, well, if all of these things are permitted, then what is excluded? Can you kind of just reiterate, like, why this is broken down as such?
Sure, Commissioner Cruz. I think it's a general prohibition unless you fit into one of these exceptions. And the reason that these exceptions are drafted the way they are, these are things that are viewed as being essential. There is some guidance that's been placed out there that's much more detailed, believe it or not, than even this order as to what, what may be an essential service. But it's also, these are, the, part of the idea would be, if you have a service, probably the most concerning medical things that you would, or most concerning things to medical folks would be situations where the people are in close proximity for a prolonged period of time. I've seen, you know, the CDC has released that your likelihood of transmitting this disease from one person to another goes up if you're within six feet for 10 minutes or more. And so, you know, a good example would be like, and this isn't to say this is the only one, but like a hairstylist or a barber, they may be near you, within that six-feet bubble, if you will, for a prolonged period of time, and that's can be riskier from a public health standpoint. There may be places that sell products that, while people would like them, they may not be essential under this order. So there are, you know, I mean, a thing I could think of, and this is just one that came to mind, is, I mean, a lot of people like playing video games, but I don't think a store that would sell video games would necessarily be an essential business under this order. And so.
I think my brother would disagree with you on that one.
I would imagine there are a lot of people who might. And so, you know, the idea is, I think, if this would be adopted, and what, the jurisdictions that have done this would be to limit those interactions, but still allow, you know, the medical system to function is probably priority number one. And part of that's the government, and of course, you know, our first responders have to be able to enact, but you know, there's, there's other. to be able to enact, but you know, there's, there's other, the medical system doesn't operate within a bubble. And so there are some support services that are needed, and that's why there are these exceptions. And because it's a general prohibition, where you say, if you don't fit into one of these, your business, unless you can work from home, or to the extent you can work from home, you would need to close down, and that's why there's a long list of exceptions. It's intended to capture those so that it's not overly restrictive, but still captures the public health concerns that would be in play here. Because, I mean, this is, it's a concerning time for the whole country. And so I think that's the intent behind what Johnson County was doing with this order and how it's drafted.
Okay. Someone? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we go through this, I am certain that if this is adopted by Dr. Menz, that there's going to be something else that comes up that we're going to deem essential. So how difficult is this to amend, to add other items to as we move forward? I don't want it to be so restrictive that we can't make adjustments.
That's a good question, Commissioner Dennis. Section five on this on page seven says, "The order may be supplemented or modified as required for the effective and efficient management and control by," really, in this case, would probably be the local health officer most clearly, would have the authority to do that. So it's not set in stone. I mean, it is, it's drafted to be in place for thirty days, but it can be modified. I think one thing the county's going to be doing, in order to help aid the public on this and get some clarity, is provide, trying to provide, you know, whether it's a frequently asked questions or trying to answer questions, because I know all five of you commissioners have received numerous questions, how does this apply to me, or does it not apply to me? And so, I think that's something that, but I think you're right. It, you know, we'd like to think that this covers everything and that there's no need for a change, but it does have the ability to be changed if that's deemed appropriate. And that would be through Dr. Menz, is who'd have the authority to do that.
Very good. One other question that I've been asked several times today is, seniors are especially vulnerable, and is there some way that we can ask the grocery stores to make certain hours available to seniors so that they can get their needed supplies before that the whole rest of the community descends upon the grocery store and everything is picked clean?
That's a good question, Commissioner Dennis, and I'm looking through it right now. I want to say that there's a particular place in this order where it clarifies that they can, if you have, if you're elderly population or vulnerable population, that they are encouraged to set aside certain hours for that. I'm trying to double check while I'm looking here to see if that's actually specifically stated. I can continue to look at that and maybe update, but I believe it is in this order, Commissioner Dennis. I'm just, at this moment, having a hard time finding exactly where it's at in there. But I think, I think they're encouraged to do so. If the board saw fit and Dr. Menz would do so, I mean, you could advise Dr. Menz to add something to say that you would request that grocery stores allow an hour specifically for those folks, you know. You could, you could add that, or you could recommend that Dr. Menz add something like that into the order. But I believe there is some general encouragement in here to do that.
Very good. That's all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you very much. Justin, I'm getting some messages from some people that own liquor stores. Would that be under section one, item B, number two? Would they be considered there? Because I know I talked to Jason Watkins.
On page four? Sure. I think they would probably most, most fit under essential businesses, item exception two, which would be on page four.
Okay.
It talks about food, beverages, and so I think that's where, you know, I think they would be able to stay open under that.
Okay, very nice. The other message that I just got was, is the daycare open for everyone or just essential employees?
I think, in terms of the question, I think it would be, I mean, if you're, if you're a childcare facility, I think you would want to, it may make sense to try to vet, hey, are you performing an essential function under this? Of course, there are a lot, you know, there's twenty-six exceptions, so a good share of children's parents, their jobs may fit into this. And so I don't think it necessarily imposes some burden on them to go through this on every way, but I mean, it may, it may be an appropriate practice for them to say, hey, are you providing an essential service to do this? Because I, I mean, the risk would be, if this order gets approved, the concern and the risk behind it is not having those kids spread germs to each other and viruses to each other. But I don't think it's limited in that way, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Okay. Another question is, are we closing down golf courses with this order?
Let me look at that exception. I don't believe golf courses would probably fit into that, to be honest. Because gyms and clubs have been specifically excluded from, and I should have probably pointed that out. Healthcare operations, I'm sorry, not healthcare operations.
Yeah, I saw that earlier about the clubs.
Yes, and...
Under item seven?
Yes.
Under section one?
The healthcare operations does not include activities at fitness and exercise gyms and similar facilities, but probably a golf course facility, I mean, it would be similar in some ways. The closest thing that I don't think applies would be the provision about people being able to go on walks and that type of thing. The thing is, there, you go on a walk, you're not necessarily interacting with other people, and...
You can get back to me on that one.
Yeah, I'm trying to see here. I don't think it would, I don't think it would allow that, no.
Okay. Okay. Well, we, yeah, we can get back. And then my last one, let's see, daycare, golf courses. All right, I think I'm good for now. Thank you.
And I've located that particular provision, Commissioner O'Donnell. It says, "To engage in outdoor activities, provided the individuals comply with social distancing requirements." And it talks about walking, hiking, or running. Those are all things you can do out without going to a business. But at no point does it define that type of business as an essential business. So I think, in reading how this is drafted, it would allow you as an individual to go out and do those types of things outdoors. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't say you can't go on a walk in your neighborhood. But if you're a business, again, any business is going to have a certain amount of contacts between people. Yeah, I think a golfing business would not be included in that exception.
What about area, what about sexual assault or domestic violence centers? Where would they fall under? So for victims, victim services that are considered essential?
And I'm, are you reading from, Commissioner Cruz, are you reading from a particular provision on that, or are you just asking questions?
I'm asking where that would fall to protect those. I mean, would it fall under the vulnerable populations? I'm not, I can't...
Sure. I think that would apply under... Give me just a second here to make sure I got that. And Commissioner Cruz, in looking at this, I don't see a specific item that would apply. I thought we had, and I would welcome if anyone else has located the provision on kind of a general catch-all on public health, safety, and welfare. But I think if the board sees fit, we could recommend adding an item on that, because that would seem to be an essential service, an essential business, too.
I think there's somewhere, one of them said vulnerable, public or vulnerable?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
On page four, five, number five, at the bottom, economically disadvantaged, otherwise needy individuals.
Yes, and I think...
necessities of life.
Okay, E-five.
Actually, yes, Commissioner Cruz, my apologies for not catching that one right away. I think that one would apply to what you're talking about there, so I don't think a change would be needed on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, Mr. Dennis?
I'm sorry to go back again, but I just got a text from one of our city council persons, and they ask, where are governments listed in here?
Sure. Governments are listed under essential, it's on page four, top of page four, essential governmental functions, and so...
A lot of people would argue about that, David.
And so I think that, you know, if a government needs to meet, take action, I think that would fit under an essential governmental function, because each governing body of each government, of each local government agency may have action they need to take for the best interest of their citizens and constituents. So I think that would fit under that. They would, they would need to do social distancing, like we're trying to do in here today. I mean, there's only, there's limited space, but I think that's something they would need to abide by, though. Thank you.
Okay. Chris Al.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions. Can you please talk about section four on page seven? Can you please explain how that will work?
Okay. And Commissioner, just to, thanks, Commissioner How, and I'll seek to address that. Section four of this, in the language, again, it's patterned after how it's worded, mostly the same as in Johnson County, says that pursuant to KSA 65119, Sedgwick County Charter Resolution Number 58, and other legal authority, any sheriff, deputy sheriff, or other law enforcement officer of the state, or any political subdivision within Sedgwick County is hereby ordered to assist in the execution or enforcement of this order. You know, it's, I think, in terms of an enforcement discussion, we talked about this a little bit yesterday. I mean, I think that the number one way to ensure public health, safety, and welfare, if an order like this would be adopted, it's incumbent on citizens and business owners to follow it. But then the necessary, the logical follow-up question is, well, how would it be enforced? And I think that, one of the things that's important to mention is, the order draft that's in front of you today, or the previous orders Dr. Menz has entered, they are valid orders. They are lawful orders. An order doesn't have to have a criminal penalty for a felony or misdemeanor to be a valid order. But again, Commissioner How, your question was on enforcement, and, you know, in this particular case, the, this would be a valid order. And so law enforcement would have that order, and various, there is no specific, for this type of order, there's no specific criminal prohibition in terms of, under state law. There's not a specific statute that makes this a certain class of misdemeanor or felony for violating the order. However, I think cities and counties, under their home rule powers, could adopt ordinances or resolutions that would make the violation of a local health officer order, for example, you know, could make that an offense. It's my understanding that I think that the city of Wichita already has ordinances that have been on the books for many years, that, you know, violating an order of a local health officer could be in violation of that. I'm not familiar with all the details on that city. City of Wichita Legal would be able to advise the Wichita Police Department and the police chief on any of that, and really, each municipality, and also the sheriff, would have to address any complaint that would come up under any potential order under their own applicable laws, if they have any that would apply, and then decide how to go forward. But again, the aim here would be, I mean, I think if you talked about it from a, how would this happen, is, number one, you hope people comply with it. It's an important issue. The orders that have been entered, have been entered, you know, lawfully, consistent with the Constitution. And we, you know, I think that the next step is, you know, if a law enforcement officer would approach some, you know, either a business owner or a group of people who would be acting contrary to this order, would be to ask them to comply with the order. And so I think there are mechanisms that municipalities could use to seek to enforce it. You know, at this point, I can't speak for each one of the cities within Sedgwick County as to how they would do that, or for the sheriff as to exactly how he might seek to do that, but that would be for them to work through.
So just so I understand, this would include things like the Highway Patrol, Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office, Wichita Police Department, Derby Police Department, and all that goes, that it would all be potentially subject to this order?
Yes, and to explain a bit further, that would be consistent with other statutes. There are statutes out there that make local health officers' orders enforceable by law enforcement. Examples include tuberculosis infections. Another example would be an isolation or quarantine order, which, again, this is not an isolation or quarantine order, but that is a known measure under state law that can be taken, as the local health officer can ask for assistance from law enforcement to help enforce this, consistent with the all-known measures, powers that the local health officer has under state law, and also as modified. The language is verbatim the same as in KSA 65202, but Charter Resolution Number 58 also has language that talks about those all-known measures, and that's, that's, the provision is essentially worded almost exactly the same as Johnson County's.
So what I read about Johnson County's order was, if someone was to violate their order, they would be subject potentially to a $500 fine and six months in jail. Is that true here as well?
I think, Commissioner How, to that question, it would depend upon the jurisdiction you're talking about and what provisions they have in law. I also, at this point, I'm not sure, again, that we're talking about a hypothetical order that has not been adopted, and that, you know, at this point, and so I think that question would probably be aimed at either the district attorney's office, it would be best able to answer that, or each of the municipalities under their own city ordinances.
Okay, I just, I guess I would like to just to answer to the question, and maybe you can answer it right now, I understand that, but I do think that this is a, something the public's going to want to understand deeply, so I think we need to understand it so we can explain it. And then in terms of the policing of this, you say that they would have the authority potentially to question and possibly, you know, ask, if you will, people to comply with the order, but do you think there, I mean, is this, do we anticipate they're going to be doing things like policing this, where they pull people over to question where they're headed, and that type of thing? What kind of, I mean, is that, is that something we should expect here in Sedgwick County?
Keep in mind, Commissioner How, I can't speak for any of the police chiefs in the cities or for the sheriff's office on that question. Sedgwick County Sheriff has his own legal counsel. I would be somewhat surprised if that's a measure they would take. I don't think that's something that they are, would be contemplating at this point in time at all, Commissioner How.
Okay. I have a letter from an attorney here in town, I'd like you to explain this as well. I'm sure you have an explanation, but they said that the concerns are the legal authority to isolate or quarantine persons who do not have COVID-19 virus or have not been exposed to the virus. It appears the authority to isolate or quarantine or governed in KSA 65129B should be noted that the authority appears to apply only to those who have been, who have the virus or have been exposed. It does not appear to give any authority to isolate or quarantine persons who do not have the virus or have not been exposed. Can you please explain how this?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
How to navigate that, thank you.
And I think I mentioned that a little bit earlier in my remarks, that this order draft is not an isolation or quarantine order, and I think the attorney who wrote that was saying, you know, to explain a little bit further, if somebody is subjected to an isolation or quarantine order, they have the right to request a hearing, an expedited hearing within a judge within three days. They also have certain rights under habeas corpus, that's why they have that right. But this is not an isolation or quarantine order, so while I understand why the question's been asked, that's not one of the statutory authorities for what's being proposed in this draft order.
All right. I just want to say, I did, I have read a lot of email in the last day or so, especially in the last day, we had a huge number of emails, and some people are asking questions I don't know how to answer, but I'm just going to throw some of these out there. I had a question from someone in the charity donation business, if you want to call it that, where they collect goods that are donated to them, they don't plan to sort or distribute those goods, but they do want to be able to receive those goods. Is that something that would be permissible under this order?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then I know there were some concerns about, are aerospace manufacturing companies being able to have some relief in this? Is there anything in here that mentions aerospace?
Yes, they're specifically named, I think, in two different places. One of the places is under, exception twenty-five on page six, under manufacturing, the paragraph that starts with manufacturing companies, aerospace is mentioned in there, they're mentioned earlier in this as well.
Okay. Just to, I assume this is going to be covered under the medical caveat, but mental health counselors, including psychologists, and if you have someone in that community that's a counselor of any type, they say they're doing marital counseling, for example, would they be exempted from this, or they, are they considered essential business under this order?
On the mental health services, I think all those would be fitting into mental health services, and I'm trying to find the exact specific language, but yeah, it says mental health providers, I think that would cover all those that you mentioned, Commissioner How. That's on page three, under item seven on page three.
Seven.
Under healthcare operations. So I think it would cover all those.
Okay. I hope I don't surprise anybody with this one, but I had someone ask, you know, with the Second Amendment, it says, "The right to keep and bear arms should not be infringed." What about businesses whose primary activity is retail, sale of firearms and/or ammunition? Is that something that would be, something that we want to carve out of this?
You know, in this Johnson County draft, it doesn't address that specific situation. I would say that if, if the commission would see fit to make the recommendation, you could add a, I'm going to go on page four, item, exception number two. If, if you saw a fit, you could add, it talks about consumer products. I suppose, it talks about such cleaning and personal care products. I think you could also include items for personal protection if you saw a fit as a recommendation to Dr. Menz. I think that's up to the will of the commission on, on the recommendation on that.
I think we have to consider that, just because I think it's a point we ought to be very careful of. And with that, I probably have some other comments, but I'll, I'll sit back and see whatever, what other comments remain. Thank you so much, Chairman.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I have a question regarding military personnel at McConnell. You know, they have 24-hour shifts, you know, all, all throughout the clock. Would that fall under governmental services under E1?
Yes, it would actually fall under governmental ser, United States Armed Forces personnel are specifically mentioned on.
Okay.
On governmental functions.
I guess I just would like to mention the, I think, you know, a lot of this has kind of shifted our thinking as to how we're going to handle, you know, Commissioner Howell. We had, our mental health services are offering Zoom-type meetings, other online-type meetings. So if you're interested in that, I can clearly see that you're interested.
Well, and I think I will add, Commissioner Cruz, since you mentioned that, there's been some efforts undertaken at the federal level to say that they are waiving enforcement of various Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act HIPAA provisions that pertain to telehealth, or in other words, talking with your doctor, mental health provider over an app on your phone and things like that. They've said that they're not going to enforce on that. So they've, they've lessened some of that in order to encourage folks to be able to seek out medical or psychiatric help from their homes. So that's something that's happened. It was just last week, I was last Friday, if I remember correctly, is when that happened. So that is an important thing to note, because it would allow, like Commissioner Howell asked about, you know, marriage counseling. Well, people could do that, I suppose, more readily from their homes under the current, I think providers probably feel comfortable, the fact the federal government is, they're not going to enforce on that.
So, I'm sorry, Justin, so remind, so on page two, first sentence of item B, so the purpose of this order, as written, and as Johnson County adopted, it's directed to individuals, are directed to stay at home and leave their residence, only to perform any of the following essential activities as described below. And then you describe all of those things below. So it looks like people are free to move around to perform all, all the essential activities, the way this is written.
I think that's correct, Chairman.
That's the way it was convened to, Commissioner Dennis and I visited with the Chair of Johnson County today as well, on a couple other items. And they even set up a call center, so they could, a call center of county employees to help answer questions that citizens might have about, am I involved or not? Is my business a nod? Can I do this or that? Along with legal support. So this is not a, I don't see the words, this is not a lockdown or a shutdown, as many of us have been told we're doing. I'm not sure that that's, I'm not even sure what the difference is necessarily. But this is an encouragement to stay at home. And, and I wish that all of us could have been part of the conversation that, that many of, that Tom and, and we were on this morning with the, via Christie and Wesley officials, the CEOs, the CFOs, and the staff, about five or eight on each hospital, highly encouraging us to support, they believe that there is, well, highly encourage us to support some kind of a, of a stay-at-home order, similar to Johnson County. They felt that, they believe that the virus is alive in our community. Both, both hospitals said a few hundred, to one of them said even, even as much as over a thousand cases probably are active, but not, of course, with many healthy people that are just transmitting and carrying the virus. So they were incredibly concerned. And I know that they even made a reference, Tom, tell me again, with the doctors that are involved with the disease, I can't remember the fish.
The infectious disease doctors, Chairman, sent us a letter, sent you all a letter that I forwarded.
Oh, they did, okay.
And we'll provide copies of that letter for the media and anyone else here. We actually had two letters, one from the Medical Society, which represents all physicians and providers within the community, and a second letter from the infectious disease doctors, who are, as you say, they're in a state of high concern right now.
And, and I didn't get to see the letter yet, because there's been a flurry of activity. So can you tell me?
You haven't caught up in your emails yet, yeah?
I'm up to like 540 of the 600. Anyway, so what, what does the letter say?
It's basically asking for what we've talked about here, to put some type of placement in home, or some type of language, exactly what option three is stating today. In fact, we even, while we had that conference call, we kind of went over the, the guts of the Johnson County order, and they concurred and thought that was good public policy right now. So that's basically what the letter says.
I think one of the, I have it right in front of me. I think one of the most alarming sentences in this letter, the whole thing is kind of alarming, but one of the most is, "We are unable to report accurate numbers in the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County due to lack of testing resources." People are not being tested because we don't have the resources to test them, so we really don't know what the numbers are. It says, "Current modeling of disease shows we are likely to see a surge and peak of the disease in the coming two weeks unless our current efforts at continuing the disease, at containing the disease are increased." I mean, I could read the whole thing, but I think we get the gist. And actually, one of the doctors who wrote the, the letter is sitting right behind you, Chloe back there, Dr. Steinhauser, I hope I said that right. I've, I invited her to show up today. Well, actually, she just told me she was coming. I think it's important that we understand, you know, we have a lot of concerns and comments going around that we don't have it here yet. Well, we see all of the reports everywhere we have watched, no one has anticipated it. So if we don't take it seriously, and we wait until it's at our doorstep, which is what people are telling us to do, what happens then? I would never want to put our medical professionals in a, in a position like the medical professionals in Italy. They're setting an age limit of people who are going to receive a respirator. Do we really want to put our medical professionals in that position when they've written us a letter telling us how critical this is? So I, I will, I have some other comments. I know that there are some other folks that I'm sure have some comments. And I think that one thing that will probably be said is talking about the economy. Well, we won't have an economy if we don't have people. And I think that it's important to understand that people are our most valuable resource. We're talking about people leaving this community. Well, we need to talk about taking care of the people who are here. So I get it that many of you think this is an overreaction, but the data and the experts tell us otherwise.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions or comments?
Chairman, while you're thinking of other questions, I just want to, I was out trying to keep the spacing in this room. I'm uncomfortable with how crowded the room is, but the law of the land today is 50 in Sedgwick County, and the governor's order does not take effect until tomorrow. So we are in compliance with the law here. So those who are calling 911 or giving us that social media information, we are aware of the law. It will change depending on, well, it will change what the governor, when her order goes into effect, how we can hold these meetings, and how we will have to limit people coming in. But for today, though I am uncomfortable, we are in compliance of law.
Okay. And so the businesses under this, the essential businesses under this, it, it allows the businesses to operate. Of course, they'll, they will be sending, they were already pretty active in sending, quote, "non-essential," or those that can work at home. But if they do have their business remained open as an essential business, then it's up to the business to assure the spacing. I mean, they obviously can have more than 10 in their business if they're, if they're separate areas.
That's correct, Chairman. And, and I'm going to go through those real quick, and also address Commissioner Dennis's question from earlier in doing that, where I forgot where it was at in the, in the draft order. Yeah, just to clarify what you're, or expand upon what you're saying, pages, bottom of page six and on to page seven, it says, "The essential businesses must take proactive measures to ensure compliance with social distancing requirements." And there's a definition of what those are earlier in the order, "including where possible designate six-foot distances." That's kind of what Tom was talking about, is, you know, we're trying as best we can in here today to do that. But this would say that they would, you know, designate with signage, tape, or other means, six-foot spacing for employees and customers in line to maintain appropriate distance. The second one is to have hand sanitizer and sanitizing products, antimicrobial soap and water available, again, when they can do it. I mean, that's, as everyone knows, hand sanitizer can be in short supply now, but I mean, the thought would be try to do the best you can to, to help any of the, any of the spread of COVID-19. The third one, which is what Commissioner Dennis asked about, is separating operating hours for, separate operating hours for vulnerable, vulnerable populations. Again, that's not required. It would be a, including where possible. I think they'd be strongly encouraged, if this is adopted, to do that. It's, there may be certain businesses where that model doesn't make as much sense, but I, I think from a, from a standpoint of concern of vulnerable populations, it is very highly encouraged in this order. The fourth one would be online and remote access, and it talks about posting online, whether a facility is open, and how to best reach the facility and continue services by phone or remotely. And then the fifth and final of those is protective equipment. And this is something Tom had talked about some before, but as supplies are currently available and become available, providing employees who have frequent contact with the public with protective equipment, including but not limited to gloves and masks. Again, the idea to prevent any transmission of this from person to person to the extent may be possible for an essential business.
Okay. And then the, that covers one sector of business. Another sector would be the public places such as, essential services such as grocery stores. So the groceries will be challenged with trying to sure spacing, checkout aisles. So now, they wouldn't be limited, under the governor's order, grocery stores aren't, aren't limited to 10.
You know, I haven't seen their new order. I can tell you what this draft order, again, it's not the law here, and I think it's consistent with how we've had prior orders from Dr. Menz, and also with the governor's prior orders. But it talks about, it says, "A gathering does not include normal operations at spaces where persons may be in transit or coming and going individually or in groups of less than 10 persons." So at a grocery store where people may be passing each other, you know, and I think some of that basis is what I mentioned before about the CDC guidance on being within six feet for 10 minutes or longer, you know, is where it's the most concerned. But I mean, if possible, you want to stay more than six feet away for any period of time. I mean, that's, but it does allow some flexibility there. So it's not just a strict 10 people in any building, unless the executive order from the governor's office goes a lot further than I'm aware of. But I, again, I haven't, I haven't seen a copy of it. I don't think it's been finalized just yet or posted on their website. I checked at about 3 o'clock this afternoon, so.
All right. Well, just, oh, Commissioner O'Donnell?
You're done? Just making sure. Justin, I, I keep getting questions about childcare. I think we probably need guidelines from KDHE when it comes to how child, I see the manager agreeing. So that's something, we need to be asking them what we need to do about childcare, because I'm getting inundated, because we know while kids aren't affected at near the rate that adults are, they can still transmit it. So people are very concerned about that. And then apparently Kansas City is keeping the golf courses open, so we might want to look into that. I've, I've heard that as well. I have people in my district that, that manage golf courses, in fact, the mayor of Clearwater. So he had sent me an email earlier. So had that question. I'll come back later.
Okay.
Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, I probably have some other comments I'd like to make here shortly, but I do have one, one of the questions on the carve-out. The Derby Hospital was asking me whether or not they could be, since they're not really doing COVID-19 cases, whether they would be allowed to do elective surgeries. And I would like to see them have that opportunity someplace in the community, someplace in the community that is able to do that. Some of those things may, may be considered elective, but sometimes they're still urgent. And so I would like to give them some authority to, to make decisions for their own hospital. I think that'd be reasonable.
And I might have addressed that real quick. I don't think anything in this order, I mean, it allows pretty broad healthcare operations to continue. So I don't think anything in this order would, would prevent elective surgeries or anything along those lines.
That's good to know. All right, thank you.
A general comment as it relates to enforcement and under this, I have spoken to the chief, city chief and the sheriff, and I don't think, well, as leaders, they don't have any intent of pulling people over. I'm not sure they can just pull people over anyway without some kind of probable cause. But they're, they are concerned that, that this will help as well, but it, they're concerned that as this disease continues, and as the community continues, they're, they're wanting to hope that they're going to worry about crime and, and potential impacts of, of crime. So I don't think they're, and I could also tell you that I don't believe, when we implemented 250 last week, and then it went down to 50, we didn't have any 911 calls, the people tattling or whatever. I'm sure if there's blatant abuse, that they'll get, they'll get a call. But our community, I just commend the community for so far being, really practicing the spacing. Businesses, many of them on their own, have been doing remote work with telework with whatever employees they can. And I think they were, the ones I was talking to, they were, they were wanting some guidance on, on something like this, so they can have a, feel comfortable with their operations, that they can, you know, roll out what's essential, what's not, and, and then continue to operate their businesses if they are essential. So it's more of a general comment of some of the feedback that I, I value from, from some business people and operators that, that I'm familiar with.
Chairman, I'd like to comment on the sheriff and police question. Both of those leaders, you are exactly correct. They are challenged right now. They are challenged with issues of crime and disturbance, and the normal things that law enforcement has to deal with. They have no intention of proactively going out and seeking these out in the community. You know, we live in a world where 99% of the people get the message, and some do not. And I would, and not only go to bat for the sheriff and the chief, but also go to bat for 911. It's a valuable resource. They're stretched. We have people there who are having childcare issues, so we are minimally staffed, but still staffed appropriately. As this progresses, and if we lose people to sickness, that resource is so important. So if people have those kinds of questions at, during the day of a crowd size, please call 211. We'll process it through there. And if it's something that requires an emergency response, we will filter that and get the proper emergency response out.
Okay. That reminds me, in our call this morning with the medical community, that they were requesting us that if we were, if we would go forward, if they were, they were supportive, obviously, of a, of a stay-at-home recommendation, but they wanted to make sure that Butler County was aware, because a lot of their workers and patients come from Butler County, especially Andover being right, right on the line. And they also mentioned to make sure that Derby was involved because of the medical facility or the branch down there, and the medical, so they, they specifically mentioned that as well. I did talk to the Chair of Butler County and told him that if we, if we did pass something, or recommend, if we recommended MEMS to execute on this order, that he would get a copy of it so they, they could, similar to- copy of it so they, they could, similar to what we did, copying 99% of Johnson County, then in a region, we can be on similar pages on the counties that are joined to us, because they are the regional medical center for, I don't know how many counties. Does anybody know for sure? It's a lot. I think it goes pretty far west as well.
Multiple counties, sir. They truly are.
Multiple, yeah.
So I'll just reiterate, if, if we don't have testing, we don't know how many people we have. I mean, that's really where we're at. We don't have enough personal protective equipment to keep people safe. All of those people on the front lines right now, those people that are coming into our hospital, I mean, there are reports of people only getting, only getting tests that are, that need to be hospitalized. And so if this thing takes two weeks to come to fruition, then are we going to wait? That, that's what I'm trying to say, is I think that it's important. I'm not sure how we're gonna, what, so are we, we being asked to do one of three things? Can we reiterate, like, what we're being asked to do?
Option one is basically status quo, but our status quo will change tomorrow because the governor has issued a state rule to take the community gathering size from 50 to 10. So we could stay current and go status quo. Option two is to close down clubs and close down interiors of restaurants, allowing them curbside and drive-through services only. That's the, the second option. And then option three is what we have spent the bulk of time talking about here.
Option three would include option two?
Everything above it gets brought in, yes, sir. Good point.
Right. Okay.
And so only option two would not really define all of these social distancing requirements?
That's correct. If we go option two, then, then the directive, the resolution is moot.
So we're only talking about shutting things down, essentially?
Clubs and interiors of restaurants.
And interior restaurants. Okay.
Commissioner?
Thank you. But item two could be adjusted to things like salons and other personal services, correct?
Or the infinite possibilities within these options. These are just the ones we laid out today, but infinite possibilities.
Yeah. So I didn't have the privilege of being on that call today because of coma violations. I think the media will be very happy to, to know that we, we've been very cautious on that. So how many cases do they think we have in Sedgwick County? So we know we have three confirmed cases, correct?
That's correct.
Are, are any of those in the hospital?
I'm not sure of the one today. The other one is in the hospital, and I think that is at Wesley and could be released within a couple of days.
Okay.
That's what they said during the phone call.
Are they on a ventilator, or?
I think the one at Wesley was, but no longer is.
Okay. So just making sure, because people are asking about that. We received a message earlier from Majority Leader Dan Hawkins of the Kansas House. He talked to Secretary Norman today. He told us, and I believe sent a message to everybody, that he thinks that, that the secretary doesn't think we should do the stay-in-place order, that we should stay the course, see what happens with the 10-person rule from the governor to try to bend that curve. Do we have any contact with KDHE with the, with our health department to see what they, they think, what their expert opinion is?
I'm gonna look at Adrian, but I know she's in-
That's secondhand information.
Yeah, she's in consistent contact with KDHE, but I don't know that you've had discussion about this particular topic.
So we haven't asked anyone yet? So the only people that have been discussing this particular issue is just us?
Correct.
The legal department and the commission, nobody else. But we've heard from individuals from the field. I know I was on a phone call earlier with some leaders from the aviation sector. I know Commissioner Meisner was as well, not sure everyone else who was. So we're, we're hearing from different fields, but not necessarily outside of your phone call with the leaders at the hospitals. We haven't heard from-
And I, I can't remember if I mentioned, City of Wichita was on that call too, the mayor and the, and the city manager.
Okay.
So they have been briefed on that, too.
Well, I'd, I'd be interested in finding out if that, if that was true, if KDHE thinks that we need to follow that order, which would be very similar to the directive we received from Dr. Menz yesterday, kind of stay the course, we're doing a pretty good job of social distancing. People are a little concerned that what might happen is you issue an order like this and then everybody goes out and exposes themselves, because there's a rush on grocery stores and things, not understanding all the exemptions.
Right.
That, that this might send some, you know, some amount of panic, if we say we're gonna implement it tomorrow versus say, give people 48 hours, 72 hours, because if we pass this today, it'll be implemented tomorrow.
One minute after midnight tomorrow.
Right.
And we've, we've talked about this a lot. Justin covered it. As we, and if this is the course the commission or the board of health goes-
Sure.
There, we will, there is no reason to make a run or a mob scene on anything.
I get that. But, but, you know, two days ago, I was dispelling rumors that martial law was coming into Sedgwick County and, and that we were having to have the Kansas National Guard help us, you know? So I just think, even if there are all these exemptions, people are gonna hear a stay-at-home order, and they're not gonna know, how's that implemented? How's that policed? Kansas City, Missouri's talking about misdemeanors, fines up to $500 and six months in jail. Is, are those penalties being discussed for, for people?
I think Justin covered the range of penalties. A lot of that comes back to the city.
Yes.
Also, we can tell you is, we've talked to one chief of police in Wichita and the sheriff, and they've got other things to do, quite frankly.
Right, exactly. Because our court system's gonna be backlogged anyway. I mean, we've shut down trials, we've shut down a whole lot of things. So, so anyway, just, just something to consider. So, thank you, Mr. Meisner.
Commissioner Al?
Thank you, Chairman. I hate to belabor the details, but I do want to go through what you just said a minute ago, make sure I understand it correctly. I know we had a, a COVID-19 case that was originated in Butler County that was at Wesley that was a couple of days later released. That was the first we had in our county that was not from our county. I think since then, we've had a third case, as you indicated earlier today, a third case that originated from Sedgwick County. Yesterday, we talked about, of the two cases before, the one you'd mentioned earlier today, one of those cases was at the VA, the other one was sheltered at home, or we should say, isolated at home. And the one you'd mentioned today, I don't think we know where they are currently. Is that correct?
I don't know that we have detail on that yet. We'll, we'll, Adrian's sitting here, she'll soon receive it as soon as she can get out of the meeting.
Sorry, we don't know where the one is from today, but yesterday, we talked about there was one that was at the VA hospital, and one was isolated at home. So we, I guess my point I'm trying to make is, at the two large regional hospitals we have here, namely St. Francis Hospital and Wesley Medical Center, we don't have any current cases that are in those hospitals unless this new case today happens to be at one of those two hospitals. We don't know that yet.
Yes, we do. There's a doctor in the back that is, is treating a patient that's in our current hospital system right now.
Wesley, correct, doctor?
Correct. Is that one of the three I just mentioned?
He's case number two. It is not one of the, I kind of got lost in the numbers, but the, the first case that we had is, is home.
Can you come to the microphone? And introduce yourself, please.
Sure, thank you. My name is Dr. Tom Moore. I'm an infectious disease physician. I've been in town in this community. I'm born and raised here and did my training at the NIH under Dr. Fauci. Been here since 1997. And I was the one that wrote the letter that is on your desk urging action. With regard to the cases we're discussing, the first case presumably acquired it from a cruise ship. He's recovering in Butler County. That's where he's from. The second, he's been dismissed from the hospital, obviously. The second case is still in the hospital. He acquired his case in Oregon and was visiting Dodge City, family members in Dodge City. The other cases that came in subsequent to that, those are cases that were acquired in Sedgwick County.
And that's the one that-
The one at the VA and the, and the, one is sheltering at home, and then we have an additional one that was just reported now.
And we don't know where that one is being treated yet, or what the situation is. We don't know that one.
I have no information about that patient, correct?
And the reason I ask is, again, I, again, like Commissioner O'Donnell, I didn't have the privilege of listening into the discussion today with the, with the medical society or the doctors that were discussing this with the City of Wichita and a couple of county commissioners. But one thing I did hear from that discussion was, I hope this isn't secret information, but I was told there was 84 new beds between the two hospitals, 84 new ICU beds that were designed to handle COVID-19 cases. Is that something somebody can confirm or deny?
I'm Dr. Chloe Steinchar. I'm one of the pulmonary and critical care physicians. I'm also the medical director for the ICU at Wesley. The 84 beds that you're referring to are surge planning beds, which means they are modified beds designed to take over if we exceed the capacity that we already have. So these are not new beds in the hospital. These are things like remodifying ORs or PACU into a modified ICU.
Right. I don't, I guess I'm not trying to say that there's, these are beds that didn't exist before, but these are beds, bedded that are now dedicated potentially to COVID-19 cases that before now not, they weren't necessarily. Guess me, let me ask the question another way. In addition to the 84 beds that are now designated for this type of treatment, are you able to speak to how many other beds there are in Sedgwick County between the two hospitals that were, that are now essentially designed or reasonably okay for this type of treatment?
I can tell you how many beds are in planning for crisis for this. And so if you take all of the ICU beds at Wesley Medical Center, including crisis beds, including PACU OR and using the emergency department for that, it's estimated that we can get over about 150.
Does that include your current capacity of 60% already used?
No, that is straight from zero.
Okay.
So that is assuming that we have no other patients except for COVID-19 patients. So that doesn't include any of the patients who will continue to come in with trauma, with acute MI, with sepsis, pneumonia, influenza, and all of the other things that we're already dealing with.
Okay. Thank you for the answer. I don't think I need you anymore for this next question, but this might be a question for, for Adrian potentially, but do we have case history for Johnson County in terms of going back to, say, the end of January? They, you know, they, they found their first case, and then there was two or three cases, and then it went on up from there. And I understand that roughly 40 cases they have today. Do we know how many of those cases are requiring respiration at the, at the local hospitals up in Johnson, Johnson County?
We may be able to get that information, but that's not something that we are already given.
Is it the 40, or is it something less than 40?
I believe the number's about 40.
Forty? Okay, well, I think that's the total number of cases. That's why I think it wouldn't be that many. It would be less. I'm sorry.
Forty and, and climbing.
Yes, my assumption was that since 40 is probably the total number of cases, certainly those 40 probably are not all in the hospital getting respirator type-
Correct.
Help. So if something less than 40, we don't know how many, though. Could we try to find that out? That'd be, I think it'd be relevant to know that. And what I'd like to know is, what's the history of how fast that climbed, from zero to one to two, all the way up to however many they have now? What's the maximum number they've seen so far? What's that trend line look like? If we can get that data, that would be very useful. Is that possible, we can try to get that?
I will see what I can do.
Okay. I, I think, I think that's useful. I, I'd like to just say a couple of things about Dr. Menz. I know he's been beat up a little bit. I've seen some of the emails and some of the social media posts about Dr. Menz. I just want to say, I think he's a very good man. I think he has a great resume. I think his expertise is, is notable. He is the dean of Wichita campus of the University of Kansas School of Medicine and the public health officer for Sedgwick County. What is his, is he an epidemiologist? I'm not sure what his actual-
Infectious disease doctor.
Infectious disease, okay. So I guess my point is, I think he's qualified to make some comments that he made yesterday. I appreciate his comments. He did a good job, and I'd like to commend him and show him appreciation. And I said this yesterday, I want to say, I appreciate our staff. You, you, Manager Stoltz, you've done a great job. He did say a couple of things yesterday I'd like to, to clarify. This is a quote. He said, "If I had my preference, we would isolate everyone totally and shut down, shut the city down and wait for a vaccination to appear in a year and a half," Menz said. "But I realize that the consequences of doing that would be incredibly worse than the disease. Economic and political and social consequences of doing that would be worse than just letting everyone get the disease." I don't think he's saying in any way, I mean, he's talking, he's not saying we shouldn't do something. He, he is a good man. He said some good things. He simply says, "Look, if we were gonna try to stop this disease, we would have to isolate everyone for 18 months until, until the vaccination or immunization was available, if it was available in 18 months." We're not even sure that's true, but however long it takes, we would need to isolate everybody. He was being pragmatic with his comment, that his point, I think, was, please correct me if I'm wrong, this virus is in our community and it is, it's doing its thing. It's spreading across the community at some rate. What we're trying to do is flatten the curve and slow it down so that our medical community has the ability to, to provide services and, and help to those people that need it. And I think that's the strategy that we're trying to employ here. And I think that's a good strategy. I really appreciate trying to understand that deeply. I think that's exactly what he was trying to say yesterday. We can't stop it. We're trying to slow it down to the point that we can help people. And I just want to say, I want to help people. I think that when people need help, we ought to be able to help them. I don't want to overrun our hospitals. I don't want them to be overwhelmed with cases. And I think we, right now, are, right now, for those, for those beds that are designated for COVID-19 patients, we're virtually at zero at this moment. Maybe we have one, maybe we have two. I don't know exactly, but it's pretty close to zero, whatever that number is. And I know it's gonna get worse, and we know that. We just don't know how long it's gonna take. He also, he said we ought to be evaluating this every day, and I think we're doing that. And I appreciate you, Dr. Adrian Byrne, for, for evaluating this every day. I know you've been probably overwhelmed with information and, and you're up extreme hours each day trying to keep your handle on this deal, and I'll say thank you very much for what you're doing as well. But I think evaluating this every day is very, very important as well, and I appreciate Dr. Menz for saying that as well. Then he went on to say, "At least in Sedgwick County, we haven't seen the upstroke in the curve yet. Hopefully, it will stay flat, but again, we cannot stop this. All we can do is slow its increments down so we don't overwhelm our hospitals." Again, reiterating what he, what I said a minute ago, we're trying to make sure we've got the resources to help people when they need help. And I think that's the strategy we're trying to employ. Slow it down at least to that point, and maybe a little bit beyond that, so we've got some, some margin, so we don't overrun our hospitals, make sure we've got plenty of resources available for people who need it. And then he says, "The executive at the hospital told him it's very quiet, because they've shut down elective surgeries and have yet to see any cases of COVID-19." Again, that was a couple of days ago, or whatever, yesterday when he said that, but at that time, he, he was under the impression there were no cases in our hospital, and it's very quiet. So again, I'm not suggesting that we do anything other than trying to slow this down. I'm embracing that. I think it's a great idea, great strategy, but I don't think we're gonna stop the, the virus. And then finally, I guess I got two more comments I'd like to read. He said, "When the hospitals start seeing a number of patients being admitted to ICUs, they have increased their capacity." Again, we talked about 84 additional beds designated for this purpose. We're a long ways from overrunning them now, but when we start seeing a number of patients in the ICUs on the ventilators, that's when we know it's coming, and that's when we should probably have to start looking at other measures. I'd like to remind ourselves, we, when Johnson County had their first cases, we weren't, there wasn't a 250 gathering prohibition, I don't believe. And since then, we've seen a, a reduction down to 50 and now a reduction down to 10s. We've seen, and the schools have been closed since then. So we, we've had a lot of mitigations in the state that I think are very well-intentioned to slow this down further and further. We've not seen how a community in this type of restrictive, restrictive environment will communicate the disease. Of all the things we have in place right now, we don't know how fast it will communicate. Johnson County, frankly, they didn't have the things in place that we have here, and so I think it probably transmitted faster in Johnson County than what we will see here in Sedgwick County. And then finally, he did say, he appreciates the Americans are much more compliant when they feel they've been informed and they've had a chance to make decisions voluntarily. Let me just commend people. I, I've gone out to businesses. They've done a tremendous job of cleaning their environments, reducing large groups, trying to keep things essential. The things that they're doing are very essential. They're doing everything they can to promote good health. They've made excellent choices. Restaurants especially have done, made excellent choices to, to minimize the impact of this virus in our community. So whether we do anything today or not, I think that the businesses and people everywhere are making great choices to, to restrict their normal activities and change their lifestyle a little bit to curtail the spread of this virus. And they've done a tremendous job overall. So whether we pass anything today or not, or whether we recommend something today or not, people are doing great things. And somehow, there's two competing ideas. One of those ideas is we'd like to slow things down to the rate that the medical establishment can handle the cases and do a good job and make sure we've got resources for those people. And that's number one priority, no matter what it takes. So that is our goal. But the second thing, which is competing with that, is I'd like to get this over with. I mean, the reality is I don't want anybody to get sick, but I would like to see the pain shortened as much as possible. I don't want this to go on for six months or eight months or a year. Ideally, and by the way, there are people out there that think this is a two-week idea. Let's be clear, we're probably talking three months. I think that's reasonable. If someone wants to know a date, I think we're talking three months before this will be retracted in some way. That's just my guess. So I'm not sure that's close, but it's not 14 days. And it's not, it's not 30 days. I think it's something much longer than that. So the reality is, we would like to not, you know, not upend everything in life while we're trying to promote life. I think there's a balance there between these two ideas. We want to do things that are reasonable and rational and helpful to protect people in every way we possibly can. And so I think that we have got to be rational and reasoned in what we do today. I don't know that we're ready to make any changes today. I love the fact that we've got a draft in front of us. I'm not sure we should make, take action on this today. If Dr. Mins wants to go forward, it's his prerogative. We don't even get to do this. It's his signature. It's not ours. I hope he hears us and I hope he would be willing to modify this, to take into consideration some of the things we've talked about today. But it's his decision to make. We're not going to vote to do this because it's not our decision to make. We're going to make a recommendation if I understand correctly.
Yeah, we can recommend that he, that he look at this document and take action on it.
So I love the dialogue today. I think we ought to make a recommendation perhaps, but this is really his decision to make. I'm not sure about the timing of this. I think we're not where Johnson County is. And we ought to be very careful not to do too much too quickly. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand that the President's speaking right now, so some of the things we're talking about may be overcome by events, so I'm not sure what's going on right now since we're in this meeting. As far as where we're at today, without testing, we don't know the extent of the problem here in Sedgwick County, and that's a big problem. I've gotten a lot of emails today. I've probably got 200. I haven't had a chance to answer. I've answered several hundred already. I've gotten hundreds of voicemails actually. And since I've been answering emails, I haven't had a chance to even listen to the voicemails. I understand that there's a lot of concern about what's going on right now. I've heard from the emails, both sides of the issue. I've spoken with a number of leaders. I've spoken with folks that have been in other cities, especially up in Seattle, that said that we're right now in the same place Seattle was a month or so ago. And they're afraid that we're going to be in the same place that Seattle is today in the very near future. We got a letter today from a number of doctors that explained where their situation is. And I cannot say that I am smarter than any of those doctors because I do not have MD behind my name. We have to make some hard decisions here, but we have to rely on people that really and truly are involved in this every single day and that are making decisions, are life and death decisions. And I have to trust their recommendations. I can't sit here and say that I'm smarter than they are because I am not. I admit that fully. Right now, what we have before us is really a recommendation that would put us in line with the other largest population centers in the state of Kansas. And I think that's important, that we are aligned with the major population centers. As Chairman Meitzner mentioned earlier, he and I were on a conference call with the chairman in Johnson County today and talked about how that they got to the place that they are right now. I know that the answer to this is going to be Dr. Mins. He is the ultimate one that's responsible. We talked about this with our attorneys. I was under the impression honestly that we could make the decision. And attorneys told me absolutely not, that only Dr. Mins can make this decision. Today, when we were on the conference call with Johnson County, the chairman said, "Hey, you all don't have the authority to make this decision." And I said, "I understand. I've already talked to our attorneys and confirmed that this is truly Dr. Mins' decision." But I think that we, as the Board of Health, need to help him with that decision. And I think that that's important, that we weigh in. So I think that we do need to make a recommendation today as we move forward. And I don't know that the recommendation should be status quo for option one or option two. So I don't know what form that we take from this point to move forward, but we've talked now for an hour and a half. And at some point, we need to decide where we're going as a community. And so at this point, I truly, with hearing everything I've heard, I know, I truly know I have not had an opportunity to hear all my voice messages and all my emails. But I have to trust people that do this every single day, and that's the people that have MD behind their name. That's not someone that says commissioner before their name.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. I have to kind of piggyback off of Commissioner Dennis. Thank you for saying that. I think our community expects us to be leaders and make a decision. We can let this linger out for days upon days upon days and then we can see cases increase. And then we can, we can talk about this every single day, but what does that accomplish? I think people want to know what the heck we're going to do. And it's important that we finalize this, move on with our lives, and make a plan for the next 30 days if that's what we plan to do. I have, I can't, I can't reiterate that anymore. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I too am not a doctor. So I have to listen to those people who have studied their entire careers to take care of the health and wellness of our community. So with that, I would make a motion that we take action and recommend a stay-at-place.
Great. Is that, Mr. Papun, is that what we'd be doing is a, there's a, we're in uncharted territory for me here on this. We're making a formal motion to make a recommendation to Mims, Dr. Mims, to.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Councilor, and Justin, please stand up if you disagree for any reason. But my understanding today is this board is only making a recommendation to Dr. Mins. So, and you'll be voting on that.
Okay. All right.
So that's the, that's the motion that I would like to make.
Okay. I will, I will second that, but I would like to ask, doctor that's addressed us.
Dr. Moore?
Dr. Moore, no, I don't care. Yeah, I think you, were you on, were you on the call this morning with us?
I actually was rounding in the hospital, so I was not on that call. I was in the meeting before that call.
Okay. Were you doctor on the call?
No, sir, I was not. I also was rounding.
We were both on the call before that within the hospital system, but we were not on the call with you guys.
And I was just hoping that you could speak from.
I am aware of what was said during that call.
Can you, do you feel that you could restate what you think was said from the, from the, your hospital representation?
Well, what I'll say is that it's my understanding that the, both the hospitals strongly urged action along the lines of the things that we were recommending in the letter that you had before you. And that the big problem we're having, we're experiencing is that, you know, Johnson County's cases, one week ago, Johnson County had six cases. They've now got 48. That's, we're on, that exponential growth is the kind of thing that we're facing.
Trying to avoid.
I really would like to avoid it. I too, we're all, physicians in my group are the same opinion. It's going to be bad if we do nothing. If we do something, it'll be tolerable. And we can, we're hoping, if everybody does as they're told, and they seem to be doing at the moment, then we can save people who come in with heart attacks and diabetic coma and things that would otherwise have to, where they'd be basically unable to get into the hospital.
Right. Okay.
I think the other thing that's really important that was said in that call that we've been talking about extensively, which a couple of you have mentioned, is that we are unable to test. So there are a lot of presumed positive cases, which are people who have been released to quarantine at home but could not be tested and proven positive. And we do have a known community past case here in Wichita, which means we know it is being spread from person to person and no longer from travel or exposure. So those are both important because that's where Johnson County changed to the exponential growth was once that they had a community transmitted case.
Okay. Thank you. And then one other comment quickly is, we did have a couple of items that were requested to be considered by Dr. Mins. Justin, were you taking notes on that as you, if we vote to recommend this, would it include some of the comments that have been at least suggested for his consideration?
Thank you, Chairman. I think my answer on that would be, the motion that Commissioner Cruz made, I think, was just the order as it's in front of you now. If there would be a will to modify it in some way, I think that would need, either need to be made in a substitute motion. Or Commissioner Cruz, of course, could modify her motion. The second could concur with that if she saw fit.
Okay. Well, not knowing, I wasn't keeping scrupulous notes on a couple of the items. They weren't major. They were, there wasn't a whole lot, but I just thought.
I would prefer to have, if you, if there are changes that are wanted by the board, if that's the will of the board to recommend, that I'd prefer you to vote on it. So it's not just me making changes because I don't know what the five of you would recommend as a body.
Okay. Well, there's a motion and a second on the document as stated, so one other, any other comments? Yeah, Jim?
I would like to ask the doctor that spoke a moment ago.
Which doctor? There were two.
Me. Yes, I forget the name. I'm sorry. I apologize. But you talked about, we'd like to do something. He said, "Do something that's tolerable." So with respect to the idea that we have group sizes being limited, it was 250, then 50, and now 10 as a state mandate, and schools being closed, and we don't know the ramifications or the consequences of these changes. Plus, there's been tremendous education with the idea of social distancing, hand washing, all kinds of other healthy habit type education things that's gone out. Do you feel like we've done things that would flatten the curve at this point? Do we know whether or not the, the stay-home order is actually something that's needed to keep the cases down below what the hospitals can manage? A lot of things in play here already.
I think this is probably best answered by both of us because we have a slightly different specialty in this. So my job is critical care. And my entire role in this process is to try and keep things below the threshold for the ICU. What we know in other communities outside of Kansas that have had restrictions on grouping and have had these social distancing campaigns and have had hand washing campaigns, that if they did not do shelter-in-place orders, they still peaked above the threshold of the hospitals. And you see that in places like New Orleans currently and New York City currently, even though they were actively pursuing these measures because they started too late. So when you start too late, these cases are two weeks later. So these measures that we're implementing are for events that are going to happen in two or three weeks. Looking at epidemiologic curves for us here in Wichita, based on the limited data that we have, based on what Johnson County is doing, the expected surge is going to be somewhere in the next two to four weeks. So actions that we take today or now will be the ones that help protect us when we expect to peak with the disease.
I don't have much to add to that. We really have, there's no way to know what impact the current measures will have until, as time goes on. The problem is that, as Chloe mentioned, that communities that have done all those things, they still had logarithmic growth. And the proposal before you now was enacted too late.
Okay. Let me, again, let's just make one other comment and that, no. I was just going to say, again, I am disappointed that we have not had more testing capabilities here. I think that's certainly something we should, we should learn from, but I don't know what we could have done differently necessarily, but it's just, it's certainly a data point that we don't have abundance of testing. And that really is disappointing and I wish we had better data. The empirical data, which is regardless of testing, we know people that have the symptoms that look like they may have COVID-19, especially those that require respiration in the hospital, ventilator, you know, ventilator type of help in a hospital. That is a very empirical data. We don't have, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have groups of people out there that fit that criteria that we don't, that we would suspect potentially of having COVID-19 that we have not tested. So again, I agree, there's probably are lots of people in the community that may be carrying this virus, but the number of people that require hospitalization and ventilation, if you will, are very small, down to probably, it sounds like maybe the two cases inside Sedgwick County. Would that be, is that a reasonable way to understand that? It's empirical data.
Our Sedgwick County residents aren't at our local hospitals. We do have one that is still in, that returned to the VA, but our new case today is not in the hospital. The person, and I have very little information on the person, but our disease investigators were talking with this person and getting all the contacts, but no, not hospitalized.
So back to my point, the empirical data is we don't have.
We do not.
Groups of people that require that type of help. So again, I'm not just saying there's not people out there that are carrying the virus that are, either don't have symptoms or asimit, asimit, I can't say the word.
Asymit, yeah.
There you go. That's the word. Or the very mild symptoms that they're not, they're not needing to be, get services from a hospital. They're sheltering in place or quarantined or whatever it is, the right word would be used. The empirical data, I think, is important. So again, looking back at Johnson County, I'd like to know how many cases they've got that require the respiration. I think we ought to compare ourselves with that community and find out where we are on their timeline, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I know we're winding this meeting down, so I just want to thank everyone that spoke today. And I just appreciate that we can have a very thoughtful, calm discussion as the Board of Health. We all have our own ideas. We all get different news from different places. And so I just appreciate the fact that we all can respect each other so much to have a, have a meeting that's as calm as this. And that wouldn't happen without your leadership, Chairman. But I would like to make a substitute motion, and that substitute motion would be to gather all this information, give it to Dr. Mins, and let him make an independent decision since he's the one that at the end of the day has to sign the order. But I will, I would like to defer to Dr. Mins' expert decision instead of an emotional decision by us on the board, who we've all stated that none of us are medical doctors. So I would like a medical doctor to make the decision. And he is our local health officer, and I trust him to make the decision. So that is my motion.
Okay. Mr. Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't support the substitute motion for one reason, is that we are just making a recommendation. He is the one that's going to make this decision in the final case, and if he doesn't agree with that recommendation, he won't sign it. So I don't know that that substitute motion is needed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to second the motion for purposes of a vote. Thank you.
Okay. There's been a substitute motion. Any other comments? I will comment also that I echo Commissioner Dennis, that he does have the full authority to sign or to adjust or reject.
Yes, and I didn't necessarily think this was going to pass, but I just would like that to be on record, that I trust him more than any of us.
All right. Other comments? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Chairman Meitzner?
No. Motion fails two to three. So we're back to the original motion that was recommended, that we recommend that the, that the document, that we refer this to the Dr. Mins for his consideration. Any other comments? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I, it's not that I wouldn't support this at some point, but I think that the data doesn't drive us to this at this point. We've got too many other moving pieces. We've got gathering orders. We've got, a lot of things have changed in the last few days. And I don't think our data supports this at this time. So I appreciate the work that's been done to get this document in front of us. I think we ought to hold on to the document and potentially consider it's, consider it's, the, making this recommendation at some point. I just don't think that day is today. And I would like to be on record as saying I absolutely want to support people and get people the help they need. I just don't want to be, I don't want to be something other than data-driven. Right now, the data does not support this today. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Dennis.
Thanks, Chairman. I don't think that the data that you need to be looking at, Commissioner, is the data from Kansas. I think you need to go back in time to someplace like Seattle and look at the data where they were at at the same point we are and look at how that progressed. Because that's where we're at really, is where Seattle or New York or some of these other large metropolitan areas were a month or so ago. So I understand that you're very data-driven, but I don't believe that the data that you need to look at is Sedgwick County or Kansas data. You need to look at other people that have experienced this and follow their trajectory. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please. Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. The motion carries three to two, so you'll deliver that to Dr. Mins tomorrow or this afternoon for his consideration. Okay. I don't see any other business and the meeting will stand adjourned.